All the city council meeting to order, I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, Phyllis.
Great question.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Pat Murray.
Here.
Wiley.
Here. You all email a copy of our minutes from our meeting on October 17th. Would have a motion to approve or amend those minutes?
Motion to approve those minutes.
Paul, second pass. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from October 17th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. The agenda's not real long this evening. First thing we have up is Trevor Hobbs, our Adams County Economic Development Corporation Executive Director, and he has brought with him someone to introduce this evening.
Yes, I have. I'm here for a couple of purposes. Mainly, we wanted to update the council on what economic development's been up to, at least let you in on a couple initiatives we got going on. In my first year at the position, it's almost like drinking water from a fire hose, so I haven't had a chance to get in front of you as much as I would like. I'm trying to be, this is an effort to be more upfront, but we have, I'm lucky to have both Mayor and Craig on my board, so hopefully he's filling you in on a lot of what we're going on. But this is an opportunity for you all to ask me questions, any questions, or, and hear about some of the things we're doing. First of all, the exciting news is we have hired a full-time workforce development director. Workforce, as you've probably heard me say before, is the number-one issue in this county. And we were in front of you earlier, and this is through the funding that you guys provided for Connected Careers that has been filtered to us to hire James, and we're still going to be working with Connected Careers. They are segueing into a more advisory board, and they're going to be hosting a large workforce summit with their board members, and they've kind of reorganized their board to get broader appeal again across more regions and more in the county, more cities, and more different areas of work. So we have now medical, manufacturing, entrepreneurial on that board as well. So, but we have hired James people. James is most recently for Ivy Tech, where he had a lot of experience working with, he'll tell you a little bit more about it, but a lot of experience working with non-credit certification training, which is very lucky because we just received, as part of the news, a $250,000 grant that was officially, the funds were officially released to do workforce training in the areas of industrial maintenance, CNC operations, welding, and supervisory leadership. So we will be running our first classes of that coming up, and it's going to be James' responsibility to organize the classes, figure out what the employers need, and fill the seats, which is actually harder job than it seems for free training. Well, not free training, it's 80% free and the company's paid 20%, but it's, with the people with busy lives, sometimes it's difficult to get them in the class. So he's going to be beating the bushes, getting as many people trained and skilled up in our county as possible. But I'll let James tell you a little bit about himself, and then we'll move on to the second pass.
All right. Well, I think it's important to note, I'm originally from Adams County. I grew up and raised in Monroe. My wife raised in Decatur. We had gotten married back in the early eighties and relocated to Colorado, so we were out there for approximately 15 years. During 15 years out there, I worked mostly for medical device manufacturing, quality assurance, and established quality assurance career initially. Worked in various industries when I moved back to, we relocated back to Indiana about 20 years ago after having children to be back with family. Worked in mostly in automotive, Tier One, Tier Two. Tier One was General Motors over at the Metal Fab Division in Marion. Worked with them to help them get their TS9000 or their ISO automotive version of ISO, QMS, established, implemented, and certified. Got the opportunity to go to Ivy Tech about 15 years ago, so I joined, entered higher education, Ivy Tech State College at the time, but I entered there in the workforce development arena, in developing professional training programs, a lot of technical programs, on soft skills, a whole gamut of good programs that are being delivered yet today. And a lot of those were for professional certifications as an outcome and/or for college credit. After about seven years in Fort Wayne at the Northeast Region, I had the opportunity to sign with Department of Labor Grant, which was a $5 million grant that was awarded to the college. I was point person, program director, that reported directly to the federal project officer. We had very good success in delivering similar programs to what we're going to be delivering here through the Oakwood Grant, and hopefully subsequent grants as well, too. The experience there was statewide grants. I worked through 10 of the 14 regions through Ivy Tech in implementing and spending them $5 million to get approximately 1,500 people we got completed through programs and certified. They're dealing with various skills in emerging technologies. We were actually named one of the top 10 performers nationally for that particular grant, so it was kind of a proud little accomplishments. From there, Ivy Tech has done some reorganization and consolidation of the non-credit side, which I was on. After the grant, I did get absorbed back into social office administration or the Office of the President, working for Tom Snyder. And with new leadership, they did alleviate the corporate college or the non-credit side. They haven't alleviated it, but they did incorporate it with the academic side. So those people that were in regions now report to the academic staff in those regions, and of course that alleviated the need for social office administration. So I was kind of put out of retirement, a little premature, so I was thankful for the opportunity to come along here with Trevor to pick up where I left off. I had some initiated some relationship development with a lot of area employers while working in the Northeast Region here locally, so I think I've got a way up in that regard, too. But we're going to revisit those relationships, and again, we've already got a program plugged in, industrial maintenance coming up in December. We're already starting to get commitment to fill the seats, so I'm working very carefully with employers to try and get that class filled. And of course, we're going to do some welding, leadership skills, and various other program skills. We'll look forward to the opportunity. Like I say, we're going to look and explore new avenues for service providers, like training topics, and there's a huge need for getting people relocated to the area to take advantage of a lot of the crews that are currently available in manufacturing, and of course, keeping them there, too, is going to be the other challenge and retention. But look forward to the jobs, and a lot of you have already met, and look forward to meeting the rest of you that have not.
Thank you.
The second thing I have is we just completed a housing and growth study through a grant with AEP gave us, and through our budget, we commissioned a housing study, because when I came on board, I couldn't find a house in my price range, and I asked around, and a lot of people were having that problem. And if we were going to spend all our time and effort to develop our workforce and convince people to come live here, they need a place to live, that they can afford and that they can get to work at. And so Wells County happened to be doing a study at the same time, and we were able to partner with them and get kind of a discount on two separate studies. The gentleman who did the study later said it was a mistake because he thought it would be a very easy study to do and just say, pull from Fort Wayne, and it'd be the same study for two counties, but were actually quite different and had some unique challenges in our county. So unfortunately, due to some technical issues on my end, technical being that I let my assistant get away before I asked her to do it, and I only have one copy printed for you, but I will be emailing Mayor Meyer, and then the PDF file, and then distribute it to all of you. So I'd like to run through some points, but you can kind of pass this around and flip through it as I'm talking. I'm not going to read the whole study to you, so probably I get long-winded enough, but there are some points I would like to highlight that I think are important. Everything you see, that, you know, when you look up the stats on, you know, stat.indiana and the different sites, they were experiencing an increase, steady, but slow but steady population growth. Actually, we have limited population growth, and most of, and all of that is comprised of the Amish population. Since from 2000 to 2016, we have lost 1,000 non-Amish residents in this county.
That's from when to when? 2,000?
2010, the last census, to 2016. So over a period of six years, this county has lost 1,000 non-Amish. And then the Amish have obviously grown by 1,000-plus to show a little bit of net increase. But, you know, when we're talking about workforce development and the like, the Amish don't work in a lot of the traditional jobs we need, so, I mean, economic development, I've reached out to them, I'm working on tapping into that population and see if we can overcome some of the barriers, but it's, you know, there's some significant barriers there to get them into non-Amish factories and jobs. So, well, we need to be worrying about the non-Amish population and reversing the trend of the decrease and turning it into growth. Our housing stock is actually much older. It's dominated by single-family homes that were built in the 1970s or before. 30% of the housing stock was built before 1939. We actually have a lack of available land and infrastructure outside of the agricultural land. Agricultural land accounts for 88.5% of the use, while only contributing 4% of the workforce. Aging population, nearly 30% of the county is 55 or older, and with a lot of the youth not staying and the percentages of youth fleeing, that's just going to exacerbate the situation for our workforce especially, because those are near retirement age. There's a clear trend in declining homeownership and increase in renters over the past 16 years. However, the rental rates are the lowest in the region, which is good for people wanting to rent, but it's horrible for anybody wanting to build. There's really no way that you can make a profit building multifamily homes without coming up with some sort of workaround, which is why you see a lot of government subsidized housing and the like being built, because you need to get that guaranteed income to make it worthwhile to rent. There is, but even with all the, you know, the lower rent, there is a very stable middle class. 40% of households earn between $35,000 and $75,000 per year. And while our county unemployment is very low, we're, because of the population decrease, we're actually seeing a net decline in the resident employees, the number of employees who live here in the county, which is a decline in our tax base, which we should all be worried about. The conclusion being that clearly the county's pastoral setting and strong sense of community offer numerous lifestyle opportunities for many long-term residents, but is in peril of maintaining a net positive growth rate among its non-Amish resident base. Any discussion of creating a viable housing strategy must first address how Adams County encourages a more diverse growth pattern, which includes both its currently declining non-Amish population and its growing Amish population. Couple more findings just to highlight. Finding number three under here, Burn and Decatur are important urbanized places that demonstrate the potential to assist in reversing the county's population decline, but are currently not organized to do so in any significant fashion. Finding number eight, there does not appear to be a local market driver that has or will generate growth in the Adams County market, and new growth will likely be homegrown. That means it's up to us to give people a reason to come here. There's nothing that's going to draw them here organically. So, oh, there is an emerging entrepreneurial presence in Decatur and Burn that may positively impact the DNA of the community, and that's something that we as economic development are going to try and tap into. I'd like to create an entrepreneurial board to brainstorm ideas of how we can encourage more entrepreneurship in the community, because that's going to be an important way to get people excited, and I really attach to the community. If you grow your business here, then you're more attached to the community and more likely to stay. Housing affordability is exacerbated due to the increased burden of transportation on Adams County households. Household mobility may be an issue in the rural areas. You have to have two cars to live here, because the schools and the work and the shopping and other experiences are not centralized, you can walk or bike to every one of them. So while someone's at work, the other spouse has to get the kids to school, they need a second car to do so, and that second car, in addition to extra fuel and the like, is, makes the cost of living here more expensive. So that's kind of highlighting the problem, but they've also highlighted a lot of solutions to it, and just to briefly go through a couple of them. It's not going to be, while I'm going to be spearheading efforts to get these started, it's not, one man can't do it, and we're going to need everybody to pitch in. And I'd like to commend, from what I've seen, the council and the city of Decatur for their efforts in this regard. I think, I've said it multiple times, you guys get it. You guys are really trying. You guys talk about growth, but it's not enough. We need a whole plan as a community, as a county. We need Decatur to work with the county council. We need Decatur to work with Burn to come up with a consistent pattern and strategy for growth throughout the county that hits every sector. So no efforts are wasted, and everything's working together. So some of the, some of the suggestions were workforce development housing. A plan is laid out in here with the support of businesses to create an affordable workforce housing, and that's not low-income housing, that's workforce housing geared towards the wages that the employees at the most regular jobs here have, with a little bit of help, not a continual subsidy, but kind of an upfront boost through soft financing and employer contributions. There's a strategy for, we need to relook at our land use policy and maybe modernize a contemporary land use policy, again, that works in conjunction with the county and the cities, and not just the city by doing itself. We need more leadership. You guys are beating the drum for growth, but it's not enough. We need leadership to come from within, and we need leadership in all levels of the county. When I was asked in doing the study, that they're doing the implementation charts, and they said every implementation chart has Adams County Economic Development as the lead on it, and that's going to be a lot for you to do, who else in the county, that's countywide, would be doing this type of work, or is doing this type of work? And I couldn't come up with an answer, and I don't, you know, if anybody else can tell me an answer, I'd love to hear it, and that's not acceptable. So those are some of the things, and I'll be talking to you more in greater detail, but what I want to leave you with is a little bit of anecdotal evidence, because that's often very convincing to me. I talked to a lot of companies and a lot of people who run companies in the course of my job. It's probably been the main thing I do, is I go ask what their troubles are and how I can help them, and a lot of times I can't, but I try my best. And one of the companies who I will not, I'm not going to name names, so I'll try to, you know, I was not given permission to share this story, but I think I can keep it vague enough that you won't be able to figure out who it is, but is an owner of a profitable but small business here in the county, and is getting older, does not have any children, and is looking and thinking about succession planning. How, what's, I don't want to work, you know, he doesn't want to work until he's, you know, 70, 80, and running his business and dying on, you know, in his business at his desk. He wants to enjoy his retirement, but at the same time, he doesn't want to just close down his business. So what does he do for succession planning? So he's talking to people in the supply chain, upstream and downstream, and he's asked them, you know, would you like to eventually own this business to put in, so you cut out the middleman, you could do what I do for a, you know, a lower cost, because you don't have to pay my profits? And he's had multiple businesses in his supply chain that are interested in that proposal. They agreed the terms, everything worked out wonderfully, except every time it failed, because the businesses that were looking to acquire his could not get a manager to come in here for any amount of raise and live in Decatur to run the business. For the county, I should say.
Because of?
Not the no, not the amenities they like, not the quality of life, not a big enough city, bad stereotypes for what the, for Midwestern living, any number of reasons. And those are things that we need to change. And we have a good quality of life. I came here and moved here from a fairly big city in Orlando, and I like it here. I, you know, I want to stay here, and there's a lot to offer, but we are not doing as good a job as we can to make that known, and both abroad and even in the area. You know, through HEI has shown us, people don't always know everything there is to do in the county, and that's another suggestion here, is we really need to advertise and map our local quality of life assets and better get the word out. So there's a lot of good suggestions in here. It's a very important issue, because when someone takes their life to build their business and loves this community and can't get anybody to come in and take it over, then that's, that's not acceptable. So I know you all understand the problem, and I'm just letting you know that we do, too, and hopefully we're starting to move in the right direction to fix it. Any questions about anything economic development related, or for James?
Trevor, are you sharing this with the city of Burn and the County Mission Council?
Next week, we're going to go for, I think, our Monday and Tuesday is pretty packed, because over those two days, we're going to hit Geneva, Burn, the end of county. I still have the schedule with Monroe. We will, I will be writing up a press release in the paper. I will be putting a copy in the library for anybody who wants to see it. I've already talked to Kelly at the library, so we will be publishing this. And I would like to reach out to several of you to have meetings with all the different entities to come together for almost a summit of, and discuss these issues and how we can move forward. So that will be coming up in the, you know, coming days.
This is very minor, but he brought up. You said it's expensive to live in Decatur because drivers have two cars. I would say that's standard for any city, so why would it be more expensive for here?
There's, it's not, not cities where if you, you know, in a downtown environment, our downtown doesn't support, but a lot of people can move downtown, which is the trend for the groups that are living. It's standard for a rural environment, but not really in city environments. There's also public transportation in a lot of, in a lot of different cities, which we don't have here. You can ride the bus to, you know, or the metro or whatnot to get around, where in Decatur, there is no bus system. You have to have a car. I know a lot of people who live in bigger cities who have no transportation at all and get around, and get around, you know, not perfectly, but can live their life.
And transportation has been noted to be a definite problem here, and we do have a group here that's working on that.
I met with, yeah, I met with Bob Corral for Adams County Care, and we've had discussions about, about transportation as an issue.
Right.
Public transportation. He's focusing, I think, more on emergency transportation, how do you get to the hospital or the doctor?
And maybe elderly.
And elderly, as opposed to day-to-day transportation.
Right.
What the study really focuses on are, I think they changed the term, but I kind of liked it, so I will use the term they started with in our working groups, but was pockets of excellence? And that's where, when you figure out your, as I said, your zoning and your land use policies, where you can create these areas where there's, that are near jobs, that are near schools, that have the amenities built in. So you don't have one grocery store on, you know, the only grocery store on the south side of town, and then anybody on the east side of town has to, you know, has a long way to get there, and where your schools are over on the other side of town. You can, you can create these areas where someone can have, and they don't have to get everything they need, because you can get by with one car, but where, you know, the spouse who's at home at that particular time can, can walk to a corner mark and pick up a loaf of bread, or walk the kids to school if necessary, those become, becomes helpful and alleviates that issue. It's more detailed in here, but I could probably explain it, so I encourage you all to read through here. I know it's 42 pages, but there's charts and graphs and stuff, so it's not that long to read.
A question that comes to my mind, which is not directly related to this, but like, Allen County, Wells County are considered metropolitan areas.
Mm-hmm.
Is that due to population? Because like, we're not, and sometimes there's money better flows to what's considered metropolitan areas. Isn't that true?
Yeah, yeah, yes, that, I would, as far as the exact definition, I don't want to give an answer. I can speculate, but I don't, I prefer not to speculate, but I can look into it and let you know a better answer. I'm not exactly sure, but.
Yeah, and I'm not sure of the definition either. I've kind of always assumed maybe it was population, but, yeah.
We're pretty consistent as far as a lot of our demographics with Wells County.
I know.
The big difference in our study, the divergent nature of the study was, was really the Amish is, was a big factor, but otherwise, we're, we're very similar. The Amish makes all our stats completely, you can't look at any of our stats, and we're, we skew much younger than any other demographic, our household size is much larger than any other demographic, our educational attainment is very poor, and those can all be explained by the, we're the fifth-largest Amish population in the United States.
Well, it also skews for schools. Adams Central, South Adams gets a large Title I from federal government, North Adams does not.
Yeah.
And it's simply because of the Amish population.
But consequently, I mean, the point being that population statistics for our county and Wells are similar, so I, we work a ton with Wells on a lot of different programs because we're, you know, geographically situated and also very similarly situated in our needs, so we can better tackle things through economy to scale while working together. And, you know, I haven't found any significant difference that would say they're a metro area where we're not. And in fact, our population center is actually probably closer to Fort Wayne, being our population center of Decatur is on the north side, as opposed to theirs being more south.
Right.
So if it's geography, I'm not sure why they would be counted if we were not.
Changing the subject just a little bit, I have not heard anything from the, the people from Champion Homes. Have you heard anything from them, Trevor?
Um, I, I don't want to.
Anything you can share?
I don't want to say too much in an open meeting. Unfortunately, I promised every E company I work with strict confidentiality, and until they've decided to announce anything, I can't announce it in open council. I have had talks with them. We have a meeting on Friday, I can, I can let you know more. But I've not heard anything as far as a timeline, I will say. And I haven't heard anything of official announcement. The last I heard that I could probably share is they did host the job fair, and it went very well, and they're very pleased with it.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, council? Trevor, thanks for coming and sharing tonight. And James, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
If we could ever be of any help, let us know.
Will.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda would be to introduce an ordinance in reference to the utilities, which would place all rental properties under the name of the owner and not any tenant. That would be effective January 1. Tim, if you'd want to follow up, we talked about this at our last meeting. There were some questions that Judy Wood had posted to you, and someone that she suggested you speak with, so if you maybe can update us before we introduce the ordinance?
Sure. I talked to Steve Anger of Boz McKinney, which is a big law firm down in Indianapolis. Judy Woods at the Association of Cities and Towns of Hainan now recommended that I speak with Mr. Anger, because he does a lot of work in this area. I did speak with Steve, and what he indicated is, one, if we're not governed by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, which we are not, then we do have some latitude under Home Rule to craft our ordinance along the lines of what council was discussing a couple weeks ago. My concern was, how do you address issues of due process in terms of giving adequate notice? And secondarily, can we just unilaterally make this change on our own? And in talking with Steve, he was of the opinion that we could. He said, obviously, he can't guarantee that somebody couldn't try to challenge that, but he felt that we had the authority under Home Rule to do so, and so I prepared the ordinance along those lines. So the effect, the effect of data. So the effect, the effective date of this change will be January 1. The impact of the ordinance is that as of January 1, all bills from that point forward will go out in the name of the actual owner of the property regardless of occupancy. And it will be the owner's responsibility in terms of being responsible to pay that bill. If the owner wants to immediately give that bill to somebody that's renting their property, occupying the property, because they're supposed to pay it under some lease or contract, that's up to the owner. We're not a party to that agreement. So we're saying, you are the one responsible because we're providing the service to that address. And that will be true for all services that are billed on the utility bill. Utility bill will go out as a combined statement. It will bill for sanitation services, water services, fire protection services, stormwater services, and sanitary sewer services. And those, the amount charged for each of those services will be reflected on the invoice. But the invoice is to be paid as a whole. And after a certain period of time, if that bill is not paid, then a notice will be sent out to disconnect the water and discontinue service for garbage pickup or sanitation services along those lines. And if the bill is still not paid, then that service will be discontinued and that service will not be restored until all outstanding bills from January 1 on are paid. We can't go back retroactively and deal with that. That was one of the concerns that I had as far as due process. And unfortunately, we're probably going to be faced with writing off more of these delinquent accounts in the next couple of years. But I think once we get out about five years from now, you'll see a significant decline in the number of accounts that you have to write off. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish. The fundamental issue here is fairness to all citizens who pay their bills versus those who choose to not to. And, and, you know, we rely upon people making their payments. It costs a great deal of money to provide the services that the city does provide. And the Council has done a very admirable job, in my opinion, of trying to keep those costs down as much as possible. But we don't control a lot of expenses that we face, and those expenses go up. And from time to time, we have to raise the rates to keep, you know, in pace with those expenses that we have to incur. And so that's, that's really what's driving this. A second question that came up that we were concerned about is can we distinguish between residences and commercial properties? So the way this is drafted is that the city does reserve the right to allow commercial properties in those instances to bill the tenant. It does not relieve the owner of responsibility ultimately. It's joint sever liability in that case between the tenant and the owner. And if there is a non-payment and a delinquency notice gets sent out, it's going to go to the owner. So that the owner is made fully aware that there's a problem. And if a disconnection of service occurs, then the owner's going to have to pay up in order to get that service restored. You know, we, we will do that as an accommodation to commercial properties because frankly, they're not the problem. The problem is primarily in apartment complexes or residences that are leased out. That's probably 80% of our delinquent accounts that we write off or more, or more. So, and again, in talking with Steve, he said that, you know, what courts will work out when you distinguish between that kind of a situation is what's, what's your rational basis? The rational basis is that we have a pattern of continual write-offs in the area of residential properties or apartments that are leased. And that's what we're trying to address. That's where the problem is, and that's where we're trying to craft the ordinance to, to speak to directly. The, I also went through, and then I changed the language in the various chapters that deal with water service and fire protection as well as stormwater, sanitary sewer services as well as the sanitation department, and tried to make consistent the language that shows that the owner is the primary responsible party for each of those services. If you go back and you look at our existing code, we got a, kind of a collage of different terms and ways of identifying language. And so I think this is a much cleaner approach to have it read consistently in every chapter for those services that are combined on a utility bill. So that's the gist of, of the ordinance. I'd like to take into consideration the comments made by Council previously as well as my discussion with Mr. Unger. And I would recommend that at this time, you introduce ordinance 2017-15 by short title only.
And before we do that, just for the sake of Bob and Bob over here, earlier this evening in the Board of Works meeting, we wrote off the past due accounts from the years 2011, 2012, five-year-old accounts to the tune of $25,334. With that, I would welcome a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2017-15 on its first reading by short title only.
And I'll second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance number 2017-15 on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Tim?
Ordinance 2017-15, short title, an ordinance of the County Council of City Decatur, Indiana, which amends chapters 50 through 54 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented regarding liability for invoiced city services.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-15 on its first reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance number 2017-15 on its first reading by short title. Phyllis, we have a roll call vote.
Craig Koshel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Sird.
Yes. I can make a motion to place ordinance 2017-15 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-15 on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Tim?
Ordinance 2017-15, short title, an ordinance of the County Council of City Decatur, Indiana, which amends chapters 50 through 54 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented regarding liability for invoiced city services.
I can make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-15 on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance number 2017-15 on its second reading. We'd have roll call vote on that.
Craig Koshel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Sird.
Yes. I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2017-15 for its third reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to table ordinance 2017-15 until our next meeting, which would take place on November 21st, for its third reading and passage at that time, that meeting. It will give everyone an opportunity, may read this in the paper or hear about it otherwise, to come and voice their opinion about said ordinance before we place it in its third reading. So with that, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table this ordinance 2017-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. The next meeting is November 21st.
Yes.
Next, we have another ordinance. And this ordinance is to close an alley, partially close an alley. It's the alley right to the south of City Hall here. And it would, we're going to make that a pedestrian alley. We got a grant through Okra.
Okay, through Okra and a grant through the Adams County Community Council.
Thank you. Which would make that a pedestrian alley, just that one half block from Second Street to the alleyway that runs north and south behind City Hall here. And it'll be blocked by way of a couple of bollards at both ends. They are removable bollards, specifically the one to the east here. I know the gentleman that currently operates Woodwings down here, he tends to need to back in there to unload his trailer to take his goods into his business. So it will be still accessible to vehicles. I don't know how we set that up with him to get in and out of there, but we're going to work that out. Anyhow, this is a simple ordinance to close that alley and make it a pedestrian alley. I say simple ordinance. Tim?
There's a, there's, there's an additional park to this ordinance. Since I'm doing this for the alley, I took the liberty of also addressing Madison Street because it really is one and the same, where we're changing Madison Street to a one-way street running east from Second to First. And it will be available for use by vehicular traffic in that direction unless it's being used as a plaza for community events, in which case then the, the use of the street will be for pedestrian use only during the events. And then the, with regard to the pedestrian alley, what I indicated in the ordinance was that it was established as a pedestrian alley for pedestrian use only, and vehicular traffic should be prohibited in the west 132 feet of that east-west alley that runs between Second and First in the block between Monroe and Madison. Okay? But the city, unless the city authorizes temporary vehicular use to allow short-term local deliveries to adjoining businesses. So we try to accommodate the businesses in such a way that its primary use is going to be for pedestrian use, but there may be instances where we will allow a truck to back in to unload. Okay? So the, and then the city street department is going to need to post appropriate signs both on Madison Street when it's finished as well as the pedestrian alleyway. So that's the nature of this ordinance. Is it 16?
Right. Ordinance 2017-16.
Phillips, is it 16?
Okay. Any questions or comments from Council? Discussion on this?
I think that sounds like a great plan.
I do too. So. Listen, before we, before we take it to a reading here, I think we have to do all three readings tonight, right, Tim? For the sake of, no? We can do two tonight? Okay. We just have to have this passed by end of the month? Okay, for the sake of getting our grant money.
Hold out the grant, we need to have the alley activated and renewed.
Okay. And then tell us a little bit about the alley, of what you know so far anyhow.
Two major elements we're introducing to the alley. One is we're having a piece of art created by a local artist. And we know a few details, but not a lot of details. And it will be mounted to the wall, and it will be an interactive piece of art. So the other elements of the alley is there will be some seating, tables, benches, kind of a built-in checkerboard, chessboard kind of thing, where people can go to the alley and enjoy all the seats and hang out.
Cool.
And this is the first of many elements that we hope to introduce to the alley to make it a very pedestrian area and a place to relax and-
Be in the shade.
-that connection from Riverfront and Madison Street hardly-
It's all going to make more sense as time passes, as Madison Street gets developed and Riverfront gets developed, it all will make more sense in time. Set lit in the evening? You know, motion?
If there's a hole in the middle of the alley, it, it makes it very well lit.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. So with that, if there's no other comments, questions, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion then to place ordinance 2017-16 on its first reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance number 2017-16 on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Tim?
Ordinance 2017-16, short title, an ordinance of the County Council of City Decatur, which amends Schedule 5 of Chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented by establishing Madison Street as a one-way street between First Street and Second Street, and by authorizing pedestrian use of such street as well as pedestrian use of a portion of an alley located within the city block bordered by Monroe Street, Madison Street, First Street, and Second Street.
That didn't happen to one, Brett.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-16 on its first reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-16 on its first reading. Phyllis, roll call vote?
Craig Koshel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Sird.
Yes. I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2017-16 on its second reading by short title only.
A motion, second. And I have a second. To place ordinance number 2017-16 on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Tim?
Ordinance 2017-16, short title, an ordinance of the County Council of City Decatur, which amends Schedule 5 of Chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented by establishing Madison Street as a one-way street between First Street and Second Street, and by authorizing pedestrian use of said street as well as pedestrian use of a portion of an alley located within the city block bordered by Monroe Street, Madison Street, First Street, and Second Street.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-16 on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-16 on its second reading. Phyllis, we'd have roll call vote?
Craig Koshel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Sird.
Yes. I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2017-16 for its third reading at our next city council meeting on November 21st.
Second. I have a motion and a second to table ordinance 2017-16 until our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is our annual approval of Decatur dollars for our employees for holiday gifts. Phyllis, you want to kind of fill us in?
The total comes up to $2,980. And since we're running a little low with the council fund, the mayor said he'd pay for some of this out of his promotional account, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, you guys spend all your money, so I have to chip in.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the expenditure of the Decatur dollars for Christmas gifts for employees.
Just, I have to excuse myself because of conflict of interest working for the Chamber of Commerce. Please say duly noted. Duly noted. These people get it too, right? These are full timers?
Full timer, part timer.
Part time. And these are-
No, no, that was the grand total. Oh, and volunteer firemen.
Okay, so this, this includes full-time, full-time staff, which there are 70, if I counted. Part-time summer help, and volunteer firemen. That's it? Okay.
How does that work out, a dollar value for?
Per person?
Full-time? I don't know, I should break it down.
Just say the total dollar.
Oh, $2,100 for the full-time.
Thirty dollars each.
Oh, thirty. And then 20 for the part-time.
Yeah. And 20 for volunteer.
And 20 for volunteer firemen.
There we go. Okay. I had a motion or not?
You had a motion and you had a second.
And I have a second. Okay, all in favor of approving the Decatur dollars for employee holiday gifts? In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. Take care of it, Phyllis. Next thing is scheduling of a public hearing for a petition for some annexation of some land on US 27. And Tim, just explain this to me today. Looks like we're going to get another business on South 13th Street.
Here's a bank in Geneva is going to be building a new facility on, right off of US 27. There is, they bought three tracts of ground and they are going to build, I guess, on part of that. And then there's a possibility that part of it could be built for additional commercial use. But in any event, they would like to have that annexed into the city. It's a super voluntary annexation. And you would think that because it's a sole owner and they want their property annexed, it would be a very simple process. But thanks to our state legislature, it is not. There is a process that we have to go through. The petition has to be filed. Once it's filed, we have to then schedule- Once it's filed, we have to then schedule a public hearing. We have to do so within 30 days of the receipt of the petition, but in the meantime, we also have to publish a legal notice of the public hearing at least 10 days in advance, I mean, at least 20 days in advance of the public hearing itself. So you have a very short window to get that. So what I would recommend is that the council schedule a public hearing at its December 5th meeting, because we're going to have to have it done by then, and that gives us enough time to get the legal notice published, at least 20 days in advance of the public hearing itself. Once the public hearing is held, then council will need to approve a fiscal plan. In the past, we've used Christie's search form to do that. I'm not going to recommend that we do that this time. I think I will try to work up a fiscal plan with maybe some assistance from some of the department heads that provide some information. But I think we can try to do that on our own to expedite this and keep the cost down. But once you approve that, then you can move forward with the introduction and adoption on the first two readings of your ordinance to annex, but by statute, you're required to wait an additional two weeks before you finally adopt the ordinance. So we're now looking at December 19th as the third and final reading date, and you would think we'd be done there, but we're not. Now we have to wait 30 days in case somebody wants to appeal that decision to the circuit court, but once we get beyond 30 days, then we are free to record the ordinance, and that completes the annexation. Initially, the request was going to be that the city plan commission review the site plans, but because we can't get to even scheduling a city plan commission meeting until after the annexation is completed, that delays when they want to start construction. So what we've agreed to do is, and I talked to Kurt about this, is that they will file the petition for site plan review with the county plan commission, which probably means that they can get in on their December meeting. But the developer has agreed that they will submit the plans to our city plan commission for our city building department, so that our department heads can review those plans, and they will agree to meet any of the requirements that we have, so that once they are annexed, what they're building will be consistent with our building and planning regulations and laws. Okay? So that's coming, but I do need you at this time to authorize scheduling a public hearing and putting a legal notice in the paper that a public hearing on this petition will be held on December 5th.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion that we take care of the petition filed and notice a public hearing on November, December?
December 5th.
December 5th.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second to schedule a public hearing on December 5th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you very much. Tim, do you have anything else this evening?
Couple things that will come up at your next meeting. Tim Graff is no longer serving as our stormwater management assistant, whatever his designation was. But we had an interlocal agreement with the county, and so that needs to be terminated. And Mark Burry sent me an email, and I think he's looking for me to draft it, so I'll get that prepared and have that ready for the council at your next meeting. Jeremy asked me to get a change to the handicap parking, and I'll have that ready for the next meeting. And then there's been discussion with the school, North Adams, about your resource officer agreement, and the mayor got copies of a number of different documents from surrounding communities regarding how they structure it, so it's something that we need to try to work on, and if possible, I'll try to have that ready for you at your next meeting as well.
Okay. With that, department heads, you have anything back there? Anybody back there awake, Les? So do you have anything?
No.
Craig, you're good. Mike?
Yeah, everybody's good.
Lenny? Jim's good. Kevin? Good. Kurt?
There's something we need to bring to the public's attention. We do have inter-revised city sidewalk ordinance. An ordinance that has been slated to be implemented in the area. However, if someone decides to fire contract for the new city sidewalk, to contact Phil for that ordinance.
Thank you, Kurt. Ann? Don? Mr. Bill?
Good.
Jeremy?
Master Drive's coming up close.
Amen.
The final little piece of concrete will be poured, first thing, one more. Couple additions at the last minute, people saw what the neighbors were doing, and they added the sidewalks today, but at the very last minute. So, Taylor Daniel will be completing that tomorrow. City crews will be down, backfilling the rest of the sidewalks tomorrow, planting grass seed, strolling, some of the work open by the end of the week, where electric can be in to reset the new cheer bike poles, and lane asphalt will be finishing up the top of the asphalt. Very large project, very nice project that's being completed. I know it's been a little bit of an inconvenience for the homeowners, but I think we have a lot of fuel in it.
Yeah. I think we all need to publicly thank the residents of Master Drive for their patience. There were a couple of them that got a little angered a couple times, but for the most part, they were very, very patient, and we had that street a mess. It was a muddy mess at times, a lot of ruts and holes and whatever, hard to get even up and down the street. And ultimately, it is going to be a very, very nice little street. It's a long street.
Leaf collection's a little late this year, the turning of the leaves.
Trees didn't cooperate, did they?
Leaf collection is about probably three weeks behind. They're not actual collection, but the leaves are turning and falling, so it's really hurts the public that once your leaves do come down, please get out and get them ranked and get them repaired. One of our biggest things that we have to deal with in the leaf season is when it gets the snow, once it starts to snow, we cannot pick the leaves up until the snow melts, and if you continually get more snow in the process, and somewhat we have to hold the collection often, you know, in the spring or whatnot, so it's really vital to encourage people to take a little time until the leaves start to fall and stay on top of them so we can clean up. It's very normal for us to start to get snow in the first part of December, which our late collection normally runs till the first week in December, which you can all imagine being about three weeks behind. We're going to run into some issues in December, unless by some miracle, the leaves will start to fall in the next few days. So make this one, get them out. Clean out the people, stay on top of them. One other thing, you can see the progress next door here with the shape of property and the form of shape of buildings. From yesterday, they moved their crew back with the property in town, and they're working on drainage work for the hard line, and also on Madison Street. I've got Don and I met with Burke today, looked at a couple changes that Tim and I and Melissa discussed yesterday with the designers, some of the minor things. You should see the electrical crew again probably Friday, start laying out all the main poles and a bunch of poles, get all the rough stuff from that, and that Burke will follow along some, you know, form of concrete that's, the weather permits, doesn't get too cold, so. A lot of projects have been completed this summer, and this is one that's getting underway, but it would be one of the community projects throughout.
Thank your crew for all that they went through this summer. I mean, with all of our projects of Monroe Street out here, the sidewalks, the lights, Master Drive, US 224, water lines, you name it, you guys were very busy this summer, and I never thank them enough, but I really appreciate them.
I'm very, very pleased to be here. It's been an honest this year.
Yep.
It's probably been, I hate to tell you how many times more than what we've done in the past. We've made a huge difference in the, you know, there's been substantial savings, you know, to the taxpayers and the rent payers. We're headed right now.
Phyllis just pointed it out to me that we've been kind of busy. Rather busy. Melissa, do you have anything else? Okay. Council members, anything?
I just had one thing.
Go ahead.
Has there been a discussion about pedestrian safety with the theater? The reason I bring it up is because I live near downtown, my wife and I walk a lot, so here, I just took these pictures. So here's a picture of the people waiting at the theater, and then here's where people cross. So then I blew it up, so you can see, that they go to in between Second and First Street, and they cross at the.
By the alley.
By the alley. So then I drove by the night when Thor let out, and it was sold out, just to see what would happen, and they come out and they just, we're going across the street, so wherever. So I didn't know if we should look into putting in a pedestrian walk there to funnel them to one location. They're not going to go to just, just let it go?
I would get rid of that one.
Well, the reason I, on, there at my Southside High School, there's one of those right across the street there, and that's an N dot road. That's why I wondered why, why would it be any different?
Normally, they don't. We can ask, but we've asked about that in other areas, and what N dot will come back with is, that's why you have your red signals in your accessions, your next turn signals. They want first, but as a state, we're all.
It's the exact same situation there. It's that far away. So I'm bringing it up now, I think somebody's going to get run over, because they just flood out of there and they go wherever they want to. So I.
Good point. Something I'd never thought of.
Yeah, so I didn't know if to tell them to go to the corner, I don't know, but.
Well, I think it's something that we need to take under advisement and.
I understand the half a block, but I can tell you that everybody in this room would come out of here and walk across the street wherever you want to. None of us would walk to the corner either.
Yeah, they're parked back here, they're not parked down here.
Down there. And these people here are, all the people in this picture here have gray hair, so they're not going to walk an extra block to get to their car either. They're, that's just the way it is. None of us would walk that to do it either. I got a lot of gray hairs. I was just bringing it up, so.
It's a good point, and I think it's something that police and Jeremy, we all need to take under advisement and look into.
Especially when Thor let out. Good grief.
I was excited to come through town later in the evening and see a lot of cars downtown Decatur.
Right.
In that vicinity.
Right.
Good to see.
Yes, it is.
Craig, you have something?
Yeah, as a member of the Calathumpian Committee, I just wanted to thank the city police department. I wanted to thank the city street department. I wanted to thank all those that were involved with the Calathumpian the month of October for all of your efforts for the roadblock, traffic control, especially for the parade routes. It was a nightmare, guys, and we really appreciate the coordination. I know that Mike Mahan was in three meetings I was in for the emergency action plan. We're making steps in the right direction. I certainly appreciate the time and effort that you gentlemen put in. Safety coordinator officer from the fire department, we just, it was excellent, an excellent, and I felt safe in the way that we handled it, and it was well planned and well-run. Also, I'd like to thank Adams County, the sheriff's department, and all those involved with the ambulatory service and all the emergency vehicles. Thanks a lot, guys, you made it a great parade.
Mike Mahan loves the parade. He looks forward to that every year. For days before, he's talking about the parade and how much he loves it.
I think Mike says that.
I think he'll say it later, Bill. Are there any comments by the public?
I do have something.
Wait, hold on, might I have something else?
I'd like to acknowledge and make an announcement that today is the Lidle Hairshack's 45th anniversary in that location. Today, 45 years ago, he opened that shop.
At that location.
And they're still going strong after 45 years, so I think it's something to acknowledge, the business in our community and downtown, and what they've meant to the community.
Thank you. Comments from public? Anyone? If not, motion to pay the claims, anyone?
Still moved.
Second, have a motion and two seconds, pay the claims.
I'll make a motion to the adjourn.
Second, hold on, we got a hold on that. All in favor paying the claims?
Aye.
Yes. Opposed the same? Tyler?
I'll make a motion to the court meeting.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you.